Jesus said, whatever you have done for the least of my brothers and sisters, you have done for me. So as we go out into the world today, may we focus on your calling to love one another and to serve others, to serve the needy. And in that obedience, you will bless us in return. We know that you are faithful. Lord, we pray for the commissioners and their staff. We pray for their families, their marriages, Lord, as they look to serve
from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
this community, to be obedient, to seek truth, and to serve others. We are grateful for
all.
Thank you. I want to thank Pastor Robinson for coming in today and helping us out here.
their service, and we're grateful for you, Lord, for all of it. In Jesus's name, we
We greatly appreciate all the clergy that comes in and does our invitations for us
pray all of this. Amen.
on Tuesdays. And just want to put it out there, if there are any clergy that would
Amen.
like to participate, just let us know. We don't have preference one over another. So we greatly appreciate your time coming in today.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Second.
So I have a motion, a second, that we adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So I have a couple of public service announcements. Calvert Health.
Wherever you'd like to feel comfortable.
Morning.
Morning. I'm gonna take this off if you don't mind.
No, don't mind.
First off, a couple of things. I wanted to, I have a kind of a proclamation, actually, which is what you guys are really good at giving out, for you, for Calvert Health. But before we go through that, I just want to give you a heads up. I know that Dr. Polsky briefed you this morning. Our numbers actually went the wrong way last night. So we went from 14 COVID patients to 26, possibly 27. We tested five staff members yesterday, four of them were positive. In the state of Maryland, the numbers are going up. So we're hoping it was just a bad Monday. You know, Mondays are always a bad day at the hospital, especially if Chad Langford's working.
Oh, hit my cousin.
I know.
Chad, I'm feeling it over here.
I love Chad to death, but when Chad comes down on Monday, it's gonna be hell. But we're continuing to fight the battle. We are still seeing record numbers. We, three weeks ago, had the busiest day we've ever had. We had 90 patients. We only have 81 beds. So it was a little difficult. We had people stashed everywhere. We had 14 in the emergency room. We had, we're using a post anesthesia care unit now as a ICU. So we're hoping to back some of that away. We were hoping, as of last week, when the numbers started to go down, they were going in the right direction. But we're hoping today we find out that yesterday was an anomaly, and it does keep going the way that it should. So with that being said, I'll answer questions, but I'd like to read this first, if you don't mind. So Calvert, I want to thank Teresa Johnson. She's the one who put this together for me. Teresa's always the right person to identify when people need to be thanked. And we've been pretty good at that lately, but we seem to do this a lot. So just to give you a heads up, from November to December 2021, we experienced 129% increase in the emergency room for COVID testing. And those numbers were crazy. We were seeing 40, 50, 60 people a day coming in for a COVID test, on top of the patients we were seeing that were actually with COVID or with, that were very sick. There were many individuals that just wanted to get a test before family vacations, holidays, sometimes to go back to school. There was a lot of reasons. But we had eight to 10 hour waits were average. When we approached the county about a need for testing, you quickly responded, and I want to thank you for that. The resources were thin everywhere. But we were able to open up a testing site on 231, and we tested more than 1,300 people for the rapid test. Now, of those, 708 individuals who stayed and got their results, 40% on average were positive. On a single day, we had 56% of the individuals come back positive. So the good news is they were driving into the testing center, and then we were sending them home with what to do as far as quarantine and taking care of themselves and not being hospitalized. And what we found is that the majority of these folks that are coming up positive are unvaccinated. And so it makes it very difficult on my staff. Just some quick numbers on the staff. They've been going 650-plus days now. Very dedicated and loyal people. And during this whole time period, when this thing was going crazy, we had a lot of people that were coming in that were just really upset. They were upset they couldn't get, you know, an eight to 10 hour wait to get a COVID test. I get it, I understand it, but they were taking it out on the staff. And so we've actually put in a new thing at the front desk, in the front doors, that asks people to be kind, because we need that. So the, I know this was completely outside of the normal operations for what you do as county commissioners, but I want to thank Mark and his team and Linda for helping us get this together. That week and a half of testing that we did was huge and really relieved the emergency room. So this reads, "Calvert Health recognizes the actions and efforts of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners for the swift response to our community's need for COVID-19 testing resources. The Board of County Commissioners acted quickly and effectively to stand up a temporary COVID-19 testing site for a 10-day period from December 29th till January 6th. During this time, more than 1,200 tests were actually given. It was closer to 1,300. In addition to addressing and pressing community health need, this effort also kept the Calvert Health emergency room available for those in need of life-saving care." So with that, I'd like to present this to you all to say thank you for all you've done. I'm sure there's a place in the wall around here. I could put it up. If Mark would like to do that now.
coming from out of the county.
Yeah.
Is that normal, or is that still above normal, or?
It's still above normal. And actually, we can use your help. Apparently, our county 911 does not register when a county ambulance is at the hospital. And so what's happening is Prince George's County and Anarundel are seeing there's no ambulances at the hospital. There could be four buses there that they don't know about. So they're coming down into the county thinking there's nobody there, and now there is. So now there's six buses or seven buses. So I know that we've talked to the folks with the emergency preparedness, and they're working on it. But I'd be even willing to help pay for what it takes to get that fixed, because it is a huge problem for outside of the county. We're the only county in the state that can't actually register our own ambulances to be seen. So. But we're gonna continue to take care of people like we always do. There were some issues that came up, where there's a new protocol by EMS, where apparently EMS person in the back of the ambulance can make the decision as to whether the person is sick enough to need to be seen by a triage nurse, or if they can just be dropped off at the registration desk and then leave. And that's a huge problem. We haven't adopted that in this county, and I thank the EMS folks for that, because we always want to lay eyes on people. As soon as they come in the door, we're liable for what's going on. Prince George's and Anarundel, on the other hand, they think that it's like a statewide thing, you have to do it. We had a conversation with the state the other day. They realize that our turnaround time is averaging 19 minutes to get an ambulance out of there, where if you look at Prince George's, for example, their average time is 129 minutes.
Ooh.
So, you know, and that's not including the ones that are spending five and six hours there. So we were one of the best in the state, but we could use a little bit of help with that.
Because I think at one point, we had set up a little station out in the waiting area.
Yes, very helpful.
To help release the ambulances, because our issue is the ambulance sits there and waits an hour, that means they're out of service for other calls.
Right.
So we had tried to help you out and...
They didn't. It was very successful. We didn't allow Prince George's and Anarundel to use that service, because we knew what would happen, is they'd just all start coming down here and dropping patients.
Right.
But at one point, we had, I remember being there, seeing five or six patients.
Right.
And everybody that came into that hospital that worked there from our EMS, they were fantastic. They were just wonderful, glad to be there. It was very helpful for us.
And the reason I ask that question is, you know, in a small community like ours, when we keep hearing the hospital's full, the hospital's full. I think the message is that, well, it's, it's, you know, there's an unusual flow of outsiders coming into the county.
Yep.
And it's not necessarily mean that, you know, in-county citizens are creating the issue at the hospital. There's a...
Yeah. I can tell you, sort of, that we have not turned anybody away. So when you have 81 beds, you're licensed for 81, and you're running 90, sometimes, you know, 105, we found a place to put them. And that's why I say the staff is amazing, you know. They've been going at this forever. And, you know, they went from being heroes to being told, you know, no vaccine, you can't work. I mean, we've got to figure this out somehow or other. But this isn't a problem for us. It's much greater than what we have here.
Absolutely.
But I'm just blessed that we have such wonderful employees.
And we're blessed, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. So I do have one other public service announcement. You know, there's been a, because the census was this year, there's been redistricting going on statewide. Locally, we have a redistricting committee that's been working for two months now, I think, and I believe they operate, meet on every Friday afternoon. The nine-member committee was formed and is working very hard to get through this process. Now, their role is only to look at the commissioner districts in Calvert County, looking at the new updated census, to make determinations of if lines need to move. So if any of you out there have not paid attention to that, they're getting near the end of their process, you should look up that, look them up on the website. And the work, like I said, the work of the committee is only for local county commissioner districts. Some people have expressed some concern about the state districts and legislators, districts. Their role is only for county commissioner districts, and so they'll be giving a report to us probably in the next two weeks, where the Board of Commissioners will make a decision about what districts they adopt moving forward. So just wanted to put that out there and make sure everybody was aware of what's going on. We have a county student who was selected as a page for the Maryland General Assembly this year. Her name is Aiden McPhillips, and she's a senior from Huntington High School. So we want to congratulate her. It's quite an honor to get picked to be a page in the General Assembly, and it's gonna be a great experience for her, and says a lot for our students here in Calvert County. So, and I do want to remind everybody that tonight, we're gonna have a public hearing at the Hebb Center on Derris Beach Road at 7 o'clock for the Police Accountability Board. This may be the last public meeting for the public account, for the Police Accountability Board, easy for me to say. So if you have comments you want to make, if you haven't already got those in, tonight is your opportunity to come out and get those comments made. 7 o'clock at the Hebb. So look forward to seeing you there. Next item on the agenda is proclamations. And we have a retirement proclamation for Morris Patty and Commissioner Gadway.
Good morning. Is there someone here from the Patty family?
There is.
Good morning. Come on up.
Morning.
Doing very well.
Yeah, come on up.
Anytime any of our employees of our county leave the county, it's always a sad day for us. But hopefully, it's a happy day for them, because they're able to move on to other things in their life and retirement, and enjoy the fruits of their labor. So Linda, you're...
I'm Cindy.
Cindy, I'm sorry. You're right. Cindy, you're related to Morris?
I'm his sister.
Sister, okay. So thank you for coming in and accepting this on, on the behalf.
I wish he could be here to accept it, but unfortunately.
Well, hopefully, he will get this this afternoon and be happy about it. So. Whereas, Morris Patty, a custodian for the Department of Public Works, Division of Buildings and Grounds, retired on January 17, 2022, after dedicating nine years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calvert County and the state of Maryland. And whereas, Morris's admirable career began on April 23, 2022, as a custodian, and he has remained in that position for his career with Calvert County government. Morris has provided reliable and exemplary service during his career, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, and admiration from his fellow coworkers, who had the pleasure to work with him. And whereas, Morris's commendable and distinguished service has been demonstrated with a spirit of pride and commitment. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to Morris Patty on his retirement after nine years of eligible and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with the community, his coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a happy retirement, given under our hands and seal on this 25th day of January 2022, signed by all the commissioners. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Marie Parker, Custodial Supervisor. And I'd just like to wish Morris a very happy retirement. I'm gonna miss him. Morris is a good guy. I said, Morris, I need you to do this. Yes, Marie, I'll do it. I can do it, you know. And he was always there, no matter what else was going on. He was at work and willing and able to do whatever needed to be done. And so congratulations from me and my team, and good teamwork.
Good.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we want to wish Morris all the best, and hopefully, his health will turn around. And Morris and I went to school together, so whenever I see my classmates retire, I start to think, what am I doing?
[laughing]
I must be getting old.
You've retired a couple times.
Maybe I have. Maybe I have. So the next proclamation is for Paula Bailey. Commissioner Weems?
Sure. Whereas, Paula Bailey, Administrative Aid for the Department of Public Safety, retired on January 12, 2022, after dedicating 15 years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calvert County and the state of Maryland. And whereas, Paula's admirable career began on September 25, 2006, as an office aide for the Election Board. She was promoted to an Office Assistant One on July 7, 2008, and then to Election Registrar on July 18, 2011. On June 21, 2021, she was detailed to Administrative Aid with the Department of Public Safety, where she completed her 15-year career. Paula has provided reliable and exemplary service during her career, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, and admiration from Calvert County citizens and fellow constituents, who had the pleasure to work with her. And whereas, Paula not only provided exemplary service to the county's residents, her courageous, never-ending ambition to help others has led her to 18 years and counting as a volunteer between the Prince Rutter Volunteer Rescue Squad and the St. Leonard Fire Department and Rescue Squad. It is with genuine admiration that we thank her for her selfless and continued service to the citizens of Calvert County. And whereas, Paula's commendable and distinguished service has been demonstrated, demonstrated...
[laughing]
...with a spirit of pride and commitment throughout her exemplary career with Calvert County government. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Paula Bailey's outstanding accomplishments during her distinguished career, thereby recognizing this amazing woman who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calvert County citizens. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to Paula Bailey on her retirement after 15 years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with the community, her coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all her future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this 25th day of January 2022. A heart, well, thanks, and congratulations, Ms. Paul. And I, do you have any family members here, or I see this guy?
Jackie Vaughn, Director of Public Safety. We were happy to have Paula come work with us, even though it was a short period of time, from June to January. She's a bubbly, happy person. We didn't give her the most pleasant jobs to do, because we gave her a lot of filing to do that nobody wanted to do, and jobs of cleaning up our storeroom. But she was there to help us. And Paula actually temped for me for a couple different times before she actually came to work for county government full-time. And we were happy to have her. We wish her well in her retirement. And if you know where we are, to come back and visit.
Sheriff Mike Evans, I'll say a few words. Being elected official and visiting the Election Board quite often back in the day, I can tell you how helpful Paula was on the do's and don'ts. And several times, she saved me money by telling me, you can't do that, Mike, you can't do that. So thank you, Paul, for being there. Your wealth of knowledge, very helpful. Thank you. Good luck.
So Mark Paul is County Minister. So I will say, Paula, if we could ever get track of COVID-19, maybe we'll get the volunteer back down at the museum. It's always a lot of fun. Thank you.
So the next proclamation on the agenda is for Cameron Parks, Commissioner McConkey.
You come forward, Cameron.
You know, I remember my years on the school board, the importance of having the resource officers and the deputies in the schools. And it wasn't just for, you know, protecting everybody from, you know, somebody coming into the schools, but being a role model for the students. And who would have ever thought that something like this would happen, and a deputy would be in the cafeteria at the right time to save a kid's life? So we're very thankful for you. And we have a proclamation here to read. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County desires to recognize individuals who exemplify courageous, selfless acts of kindness towards fellow human beings. And whereas, on December 2, 2021, Calvert County Sheriff Deputy First Class Cameron Parks, a Maryland first responder and school resource officer assigned to Windy Hill Middle School, was in the cafeteria when he was approached by an eighth-grade student appearing to be in distress. And whereas, Deputy First Class Parks immediately asked the student if he was choking. The student could not respond, and Deputy First Class Parks quickly realized the situation was extremely serious. Deputy First Class Parks assessed the student based on his training and administered the Heimlich maneuver, which ultimately saved the student's life. And whereas, Deputy First Class Parks escorted the student to the nurse and remained with the student, reassuring him that he was going to be okay. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize the life-saving actions exhibited by Deputy First Class Parks. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that we honor Deputy First Class Cameron Parks with appreciation and gratitude for his quick-response actions and compassion. Be it further proclaimed that we present this proclamation as a tribute to Cameron's heroic actions. May
Thank you.
we don't have anyone to receive this, so I'm just going to read it into the record. Whereas January 2022 will mark the 20th anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. And whereas Calvert County honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. Mentoring programs like Calvert Mentors and the East John Youth Center Incorporated make our communities and our state stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. During the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue virtually so that physical distancing does not mean social disconnection. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people and driving positive outcomes for young people and businesses. Quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being and growth of a young person and their relationships with other adults. And whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. Youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs and 27% less likely to start drinking. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of January be known as National Mentoring Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are urged to actively support and participate in mentoring activities now and throughout the year. Given under our hands and seal this 25th day of January 2022, signed by all five. I just want to take this opportunity to put a plug in for any businesses out there in our community or community organizations to mentor our youth. You know, it's, it's the best way to set a foundation for their future and we would strongly encourage you to participate in this program. So, thank you. So, the next proclamation on the list is for Maryland Osprey and National Festival Recognition. Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, and I see, Sal, you are coming up here already. Do you want to say something before we begin or afterwards?
Afterwards.
Afterwards, okay. Okay, do we have anyone else to come up?
Welcome.
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 Good morning.
I didn't think birds could talk.
Sal will explain a little bit more afterwards here. But this is a first for the county and bring some recognition to our ospreys and our wildlife. And we here at the county want to, want to recognize you for this and thank you for these efforts. And so, here we have a proclamation for you today. It says, "Whereas the Maryland Osprey and Nature Festival shall be inaugurated in Calvert County, and whereas the Maryland Osprey and Nature Festival shall be celebrated on Saturday, April 2nd, 2022, at the Drum Point Club in Lusby, Maryland, and subsequently celebrated yearly on the first Saturday in April. And whereas the funds raised will be used for education, conservation, rescue, rehabilitation of ospreys, eagles, other raptors, wildlife and nature projects that will directly benefit Calvert County. And the Maryland Osprey and Nature Festival encourages everyone to learn about wildlife and nature in our beautiful Calvert County and the state of Maryland." Now there, there, excuse me. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of March 27th through April 3rd, 2022, be recognized as Maryland Osprey and Nature Festival Week in Calvert County. And be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to support this family-friendly festival in its mission of education, conservation and celebration, given under our hands and seal this 25th day, January 22nd, signed by all five Commissioners.
You're here.
You're here.
Get a picture.
Go, go take a picture.
So, did you fly in or did you take regular transportation?
Absolutely.
Get the whole nest here.
Thank you very much.
You want us to say a few words?
Okay.
Can I have the right here?
Sure.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Sal DeCasa and I am with the Maryland Osprey and Nature Festival. As mentioned by Commissioner Hart, this will be the first festival of its kind throughout the entire state, completely dedicated to the ospreys and nature. We are particularly proud that this festival will be held here in beautiful Calvert County. This is a not-for-profit event. Proceeds from this year's festival will go to Owl Moon Raptor Center, a facility servicing Calvert County that rehabilitates injured raptors with the goal of releasing them back into the wild. As you can imagine, our bird of directors, along with the need of evoke purposes, our fundraising event planning company have been working tirelessly these past few months in planning the festival. But in order for this festival to maximize its potential, we need everyone, our citizens, the business community, the local government, to come together to step up and help. We need help all across the spectrum, from logistics, from volunteers, you know, as to who's going to wear this suit on April the 2nd. So, speaking of suit, if this board knows of anyone, say, around 5'8", 6'1", um...
You know, Commissioner Preston, um...
I got it, I got it. I'm tied up that day.
The volunteer. You, you, you think I fit in that thing?
I think you would. So, I think you would.
I had been the, uh, the bug down at Anne Marie Gardens. I forget that bug, uh, down there, what's it, a huge, uh, grasshopper or something like that? I was that before, uh...
You could do it, a bird.
Yeah, think, think I could fit in there?
Absolutely.
What do you, what do you think, Commissioner Williams?
Absolutely, Commissioner Hart. I like to make emotion.
Is that emotion enough?
You are a bit flighty.
As Chairman of the Osprey and Nature Festival, I hereby proclaim Mike Hart to wear...
The honorary bird.
So, thank you for stepping up.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 So, we truly want this to be a community event. And I tell you...
Probably going to need a bigger helmet.
Are you sure it'll fit on your head?
Be careful.
Oh, look.
Oh, look, look at that.
There you go.
Look at that. Look at that.
Not yet.
That is perfect.
That's perfect.
That is perfect. Thank you. So, again, thank you for stepping up, which now we can call this truly, truly a community event. So...
And at one of my favorite places, so that, that Drum Point Club there, I spent many, many summers with my brother on that pier there. We used to catch crabs and sell them. And back then, we sold them for $5 a bushel. Now, go figure that. Yeah. Soft shells, when we found them in the little creek up there, we sold them $1 apiece.
Yeah, well, it's definitely a beautiful venue. They're our host site, again, and premier partners as well as the festival, so they're really stepping up. So, that, that, that is one of our sponsors there. The event is being brought to you and made possible by Solomon's Island Photography, who initially put up the guarantee money to have the festival. So, it has been a grassroots effort by the business communities and now it's time to, you know, bring money and make money to, for, for this, for the, for the wildlife. So, if anybody has any questions, you may feel free to go to www.marylandospreyfestival.org. Thank you for your support and we look forward to seeing you on April the 2nd.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Any questions for me?
No. But if you need something other than Commissioner Hart, just, you know, let us know. We make sure communications works with you to make sure we get the word out.
They've been working with us and then we're going to need some, some, some help with logistics and so, so forth, and then we can cover that as well. So, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is consent. So, we have item number one, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment Number 146 Highway Maintenance. Item number two, Department of Community Resources Public Transportation FY 2021 CRRSAA Grant Agreement. Item number three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation RFP 2022-003 Inmate Commissary. Is there any objection to the consent items? Hearing none, those would be adopted as presented. Next on the agenda is Old Business. Item number one, Department of Community Resources, Director Moreland. Good morning.
Budget Adjustment. This is CD, good morning, Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. This is the CDBG Cares Act Funding Round Two Budget Adjustment. Background, on October 2nd, 2020, the Department of Community Resources applied for a community development block grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for federal Cares Act funding Phase Two. Calvert County Government was awarded $600,000 for rental assistance through the CDBG program. Since the award, the county was awarded an additional $1.9 million in emergency rental assistance program funds to meet the needs of our citizens. Spending ERAP funds was a priority for the state and the county was asked to reallocate CDBG rental assistance funds to other priority projects. Discussion, Maryland, Maryland's Department of Housing and Community Development approved a reallocation of the unspent CDBG rental assistance dollars to the following programs: Homeless Client Case Manager and Supplies Through Lifestyles of Maryland, Inc., $113,104.27; Housing Counseling with Southern Maryland Tri-County Community Action Committee, Inc., $50,000; and Vulnerable Older Adult Case Managers at the Office on Aging, $280,000. The Board of County Commissioners, B.O.C.C., conducted a public hearing on January 11th, 2022, soliciting public input in accordance with applicable laws and the county citizen participation plan. The record was held open for 10 days to receive public comment. No comments were received. Fiscal impact, none. No matches required. The county provides in-kind administrative support for this project. Conclusion, recommendation, the Department of Community Resources requests the B.O.C.C. to close the record, approve Budget Adjustment 121 and adopt the attached resolution.
So, just for the record, I want to point out Commissioner Gadways accused himself because of potential conflict. Any questions or discussion?
I will tell you, Jennifer, you helped, your staff helped a lot of people during that time. I had a lot of people come up to me and say, "Thank God you guys were there doing what you did and you did it right. You, it went how it was supposed to go. We didn't circumvent anything and we let it go the way it was intended." Not everybody did that, but we did. And thank you for, you know, integrity means a lot. You know what I mean? You know, and especially with things like that. And so, you tell everyone, "Thank you."
I will. We didn't want to add additional barriers in this county. We want to make sure this funding went out quickly.
You kept, you kept doors open.
Yeah, we want to keep landlords being able to pay their bills.
Yes, yes. I had people come up to me, "I don't do anything. It's you guys," and thanking me. And I said, "Well, I will pass it on to you guys," because, I mean, it was, um, be in the grocery store and people, I mean, it was, it was, I mean, you know, think about not being able to pay your bills, losing everything. And so, great job.
We still, we, thank you. We still have that ERAP 2 funding, of course, available and the signs are, they're up on the Optimus Club. We have that big sign up near the bowling alley, so we're still getting calls. So, we're continuing that project. This one's really exciting because we'll have some case managers for our seniors and it's been two very long years for them. So, we're looking forward to, for this particular program.
There was pressure even to not to believe it, you know, you know, Mark felt that too and it was pressure to go, you know, to circumvent the process, so to speak. And you guys did not do that and we took a little bit on the chin. You guys were right. In the big picture, you look back on it, it was the right respectable way to do it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right.
Any other discussion? Action? Motions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt Budget Adjustment Number 121 and sign the related resolution.
Second? I have motioned a second that we approve and adopt Budget Adjustment Number 121 and sign the related resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Moreland.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is Department of Community Resources, Director Moreland.
Thank you. This is the End Hunger Warehouse Budget Adjustment. Background, this fall, the Department of Community Resources coordinated an application for $565,000 of additional community development block grant, CDBG funding, from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. This funding was for the continued construction of a 21,000-square-foot commercial-grade food storage and distribution center at 6021 Solomon's Island Road in Huntington. End Hunger in Calvert County, Inc., is managing the project and the county is the applicant. The Board of County Commissioners, B.O.C.C., voted to approve the submission of this application on October 5th, 2021, following the public hearing and received notice of approval from DHCD on December 3rd, 2021. On December 14th, 21, the budgets, I'm sorry, the Board of County Commissioners signed the grant agreement with DHCD. Discussion, in order to proceed with the project and continue funding, the Board of County Commissioners must approve a budget adjustment. Budget Adjustment 127 has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office. The B.O.C.C. conducted a public hearing on January 11th, 2022, soliciting public input in accordance with applicable laws and the county citizen, citizen participation plan. The record was held open for 10 days to receive public comment. No comments were received, however, we did receive a letter of support from End Hunger, Inc. Fiscal impact, none. No matches required. The county provides in-kind administrative support for this project and recently provided American Rescue Plan funding for this project. Conclusion, the Department of Community Resources requests the Board to close the record, approve Budget Adjustment 127 and adopt the attached resolution.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to close the record, approve Budget Adjustment 121 and adopt the attached resolution.
127.
It says 121 here.
I've got 127 on mine.
Is it, is it?
127.
127.
Okay, 127. It's 121 in my book. I'm six away.
Close enough.
Is there a second to the motion? I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt Budget Adjustment Number 127 and sign the related resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you going to get your permanent seat right there?
I know. It's really getting warm.
Just come on up here, Jennifer. You'll make another seat.
We're going to move on to New Business. Item one is Department of Community Resources, Director Moreland.
Okay, I want to make a correction to this memo. It should say fiscal year 2024 Comprehensive Flood Management Grant, and this is for the Calvert Pines Washout. Background, there are two deep washouts on the perimeter of the Calvert Pine Senior Center and housing facilities resulting from failing storm water systems. In fiscal year 2021, the Board of County Commissioners supported environmental and engineering conducted by Calvert Soul Conservation District to assess costs for repairs to the washouts. In fiscal year 22, bidding for those, 2022 bidding for those projects began within House Con...
record, approve Budget Adjustment 127, and adopt the attached resolution.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to close the record, approve Budget Adjustment 121, and adopt the attached resolution.
127.
It says 121 here.
I got 127 on mine.
Is it?
127.
127.
Okay, 127. It's 121 in my book. I'm six away.
Close enough.
Is there a second to the motion? Have a motion and a second to approve and adopt Budget Adjustment Number 127 and sign the related resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you going to get your permanent seat right there?
I know. It's really getting warm.
Just come on up here, Jennifer.
We're going to move on to New Business. Item one is Department of Community Resources, Director Moreland.
Okay. I want to make a correction to this memo. It should say fiscal year 2024 Comprehensive Flood Management Grant, and this is for the Calvert Pines Washout. Background: There are two deep washouts on the perimeter of the Calvert Pine Senior Center and housing facilities resulting from failing storm water systems. In fiscal year 2021, the Board of County Commissioners supported environmental and engineering conducted by Calvert-Sole Conservation District to assess costs for repairs to the washouts. In fiscal year 22, bidding for those, 2022 bidding for those projects began within house contractors. Due to cost increases related to the pandemic and the quality of soil needed for repairs, bids far exceeded the original estimates by over $300,000. This project continues to be a high priority as it aligns with the Watershed Implementation Plan, WIP, goals to manage storm water and mitigate damage from excessive rainfall. Discussion: The Department of Public Works, DPW, and Community Resources collaborated on an FY 2024 application for the Maryland Department of Environment's Comprehensive Flood Management Grant to cover costs for construction. DPW and the housing authorities shared costs for design and will continue this arrangement for any contingency costs. Fiscal impact, received $630,000. Positive impact to the Calvert Pines Washout Storm Management Project account if awarded. Conclusion: It is recommended the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Board President to sign the attached, should be fiscal year 2024 Comprehensive Flood Management Grant Program Application. I did want to make a note that I was able to find out that we can encumber. We, by the end of this year, have to have had approval from Department of Public Works on the application, Maryland Department of Public Works on the site work, and that we do need to follow the bidding process for disadvantaged businesses and minority businesses. But we're very comfortable doing that. We've done that before with our CDBG grants. So while we do have money to start these projects now in our budget, the idea is this would be able to pay us back. So I think I will have to come back before you to make a request for this in FY 23 budget.
So, because we did have a discussion earlier in staff about delaying, what impacts delaying the project might have. So what we could do is go ahead and move forward with the project and recover some of those costs through that grant.
Once awarded. But you were right on the timeline, even though the decisions, it officially has to go through the Maryland General Assembly in next year's cycle. So it will be a delay of a year in getting reimbursed.
Right. And, you know, I don't know if this is all COVID, but people talk about the impacts of what's been going on in the last two years, and this project doubled in cost, which is amazing. So I think, based on the information you provided, now our strategy is probably to work with Public Works and go ahead and move the project, and we'll cover those costs and recover that through the grant.
Okay.
At a later date.
Okay.
That's the consensus of the board. All right. So, we do need an action?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Board President to sign the attached FY 2023 Comprehensive Flood Management Grant Program Application.
Second?
Have a motion and a second that we authorize the President to sign the FY 2023 Comprehensive Flood Management Grant Program Application. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So, you don't have item two? Jeez. Thank you, Director Moreland. Item two under New Business, Department of Technology Services.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Amy Lawson, the Director of Technology Services, and to my right is Robert Denton, my Infrastructure Manager. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like me to read the memo?
If you would, please.
Sure. The background: The Department of Technology Services had fiber installed on Route 231, Halloween Point Road, between Stafford Road and the new county facilities on Skipjack Road to provide network connectivity. This is approximately three miles. Discussion: The attached memorandum of understanding, Amendment 2, will transfer ownership of this fiber to the state of Maryland. By taking ownership of the fiber, the state will assume responsibility for fiber repairs, maintenance, and relocation, as well as for all misutility locates. This arrangement is beneficial to the county in that it provides the fiber repair and maintenance coverage we would otherwise be paying to another contractor. Should there be any realignment or widening of Halloween Point Road, it will fall to the state to bear all relocation costs. Fiscal impact: The increase in annual maintenance is $5,565 and is currently available in the Department of Technology Services budget. Conclusion and recommendation: The Department of Technology Services requests that the President of the Board of the County Commissioners sign the memorandum of understanding amendment 2, so that the state will have the responsibility for said fiber on Route 231.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So for transferring the ownership to the state, and they're going to take over maintenance, repairs, and relocation, why do we have an annual maintenance cost of $5,565?
We pay an annual maintenance fee to the state right now for other fiber that is, that they have control of, and this is just a basic maintenance fee in general.
So this covers it all? This is not necessarily particular to this project?
No, no, sir. No, sir. We do, this is the traditional arrangement.
Okay. Very good. Discussion or other questions? Actions? Motions?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion authorizing the Board President to sign the memorandum of understanding amendment number two in reference to the transfer of the fiber optics on Route 231 to the state of Maryland.
Second?
Have a motion and a second that we authorize the President to sign and adopt a motion authorizing a memorandum of understanding amendment two.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Robert. Again.
We have a lot of repeat customers.
Robert was the backup on that one?
Robert was the backup on that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Great job. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Background: As technology continues to grow, the governance of that technology is critical to ensure its proper usage within the county. Discussion: The Department of Technology Services has updated and/or developed new policy around three topics: acceptable use, personally-owned devices, and equipment disposal. The acceptable use policy covers the general use of software, hardware, internet, wireless networks, voice communication systems, and hoteling stations, as well as multi-factor authentication tokens and the passwords within the county government. The personally-owned devices policy covers the acceptable use of personal devices, such as cell phones and printers, for Calvert County government-related work. This policy allows staff to use personal cell phones for timekeeping and other minor functionality, as well as establishes that the county will not pay for a device or the accompanying supplies, such as paper, for any personal device. The equipment disposal policy provides the proper disposal protocol for decommissioning hardware in county government when it has reached its end of useful life. These three policies add definition, clarity, and governance to the processes they address. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusions and recommendation: Staff requests the Board of County Commissioners approve the following technology policies: acceptable use, personally-owned devices, and equipment disposal.
So currently, an individual employee cannot use their personal devices to enter into the system?
That is correct, sir. And I'd like to clarify here, it's not to enter into the network system. These applications are applications that live in the cloud and are not connected to the Calvert County government network. So, for example, our timekeeping system is a system called ExecuTime. This will be extremely helpful for Parks and Rec because they have staff who do not necessarily work on county property and would allow them to be able to enter their time as a convenience through their personally-owned device.
So there's no concern of any kind of virus coming through these devices?
No, sir, because the policy covers that no one will be connected to the Calvert County network on these devices. It will only be through third-party applications.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I'd like to say that those are very thorough policies and write-ups. I learned a lot by reading them. Took me extra time to look up some of the words to figure out what they meant from my old age. So I'm not saying I'm now tech-savvy, but I'm a little bit smarter than I was last week when it comes to tech. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? Actions? Motions? I have to ask.
I'm not trying to monopolize the...
I was going to make the statement that Commissioner Weems is not the only one that can make a motion.
Okay. I wasn't prepared. I will. Make a motion that...
I don't believe that, Chris. Okay, I'm sorry. We'll go back. You're not prepared. I don't believe that.
Make a motion that the Board adopt and approve the acceptance use policy, equipment disposal policy, and personally-owned devices policy when it comes to Department of Technology Services.
Second?
So I have a motion and a second that we adopt and pass a motion approving the acceptable use policy, equipment disposal policy, and personally-owned devices policy. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I learned a long time ago that the President cannot make motions, second motions, or vote motions. So just need a little help.
Oh, parliamentarian.
Can I just do it by myself?
Under certain circumstances, yes, you may.
Oh!
Make a motion, second motion, build on the motion.
That's when you're here by yourself.
Mr. County Attorney, you and I have a discussion after this meeting is over.
That 20% might be a misnomer.
It went to 100.
There we go.
We digress. Item four under New Business, Department of Finance and Budget. Director?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
She's got pep in her step.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, Director of Finance and Budget. Background: On December 14th, 2021, in regular session, the Board of County Commissioners voted to support seven requests for state legislation, one being the bond authority for Calvert County for capital projects for FY 2023. Below is the list of bonding authority requests. For Calvert Pine Senior Center renovations, $1,458,000. Breezy Shoreline restoration, $2,250,000. Lower Marbor Culvert, $75,000. Storm drainage piping, $1 million, and this is a total for the general fund of $4,783,000. For the enterprise funds, Water and Sewers asking for $1.4 million for West Prince Frederick Storage Tank. We're also including in our authority request $150,000 for issuance costs. So our total bonding authority request for legislature is $6,333,000. Physical impact is to be determined when we sell the bonds. Conclusion and recommendation: Staff seeks Commissioner guidance on moving forward with the bonding authority legislative request.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
And staff is here to answer any questions that you have on the authority request.
Thank you. Any discussion? Questions? Actions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Weems?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board adopt and pass a motion authorizing staff to submit $13,183,000 as the county's request for bond authority to the senators and delegation. But I'd also like to add an amendment to add $15 million to the CIP for the Solomons Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department. Second?
So there's a motion and a second on the floor that we adopt the staff request of $13,183,000 in bond authority request, but to amend that amount to include $15 million for the Solomons Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad. Any dis... Is that... I'm just making sure. Mr. County Attorney?
Commissioners, that would be for a capital improvement program that includes design and construction in that 15?
Yes. And I, yes, I apologize for inclusion.
No problem. Because there's already some money in the CIP for land acquisition and for a study to be done.
Correct.
So there's already some beginning bonding authority there.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you.
Item five, Department of Public Works. Director, Deputy Director, the dynamic duo.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
J.R. Koskow, Deputy Director of Public Works. We're here to talk about the January 3rd storm and tree and debris cleanup in the right of ways. Background: The county right of way sustained major storm damage to the trees from the January 3rd, 2022 storm event, causing many public safety hazards. Therefore, emergency purchase orders were requested and issued to expedite the tree and debris cleanup process. Discussion: The Department of Public Works Project Management Division used all available county staff manpower and contractors holding county contracts to expedite cleanup of trees and debris in the county right of way to address public safety concerns. However, due to the size of the cleanup efforts, additional contractors not under contract are necessary. Honeycomb Lawn Care LLC and Penn Ave Construction LLC, known for their expertise in tree and debris cleanup, have performed this service for the county in the past, were issued emergency purchase orders, and immediately responded with crews to support the cleanup efforts. Honeycomb LLC provided a crew to chip, load, and haul debris, and Penn Ave Construction LLC has provided equipment and labor to load and haul debris. All debris is being sent to the Calvert County landfill for processing. Debris was tracked and is being tracked and weighed by a road name and will be recycled at a later date. The county's Code of Public Law requires goods and services in excess of $30,000 to be competibly bid, except in case of emergency. The Code states, Section 6102, for purchases or contracts made when the county commissioners determine that an emergency exists, provided that the commissioners publish an explanation of the circumstances deemed to consist with emergencies in at least two county newspapers. Fiscal impact: Funding for the cleanup will initially come out of the DPW's Division of Project Management Bureau account. These expenses will be covered by a budget adjustment at a later date. Conclusion and recommendation: It is requested that the Board of County Commissioners deem this an emergency tree and debris cleanup for the county right of ways and notify the public of emergency procurement in two county newspapers.
So moved. Is there any discussion?
That was easy.
So before we vote, I do want to say it was brought to our attention this morning that in some, we have begun cleanup of this debris, and in some cases, we go back and homeowners have dragged their own debris out alongside the road. This program is not intentioned to haul away private property owners' debris. This is our responsibility to clean up the debris within our right of way. Private property owners can haul their debris to the landfill and appeal at no charge, have that debris taken care of, but we cannot continue to go back and re-clean roads, you know. So I just want to encourage property owners out there, it's your responsibility to get your debris and dispose of it properly, but not drag it back out to the county road just because you see us coming through there cleaning up. So I just want to make that point for those out there.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just a little off-subject, I just happened to read an article this morning talking about road salt and how it contaminates our waterways and even home wells. So we may want to look at in the future how effectively and efficiently we use road salt in our county roads.
Yes, sir. We'll look into policies for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Department of Finance and Budget. Director Strand? Or Director Vaughn? Or whoever? Veronica?
Yes. Everyone but...
Everyone but me. I'm gonna leave.
I ran down the whole list, and you're the only one that came up, so.
For right now.
Bless your heart.
They're gonna, thank you. They're gonna take their, take turns, I think, coming up.
All right.
I'll read the memo, if that's okay, Commissioner Hart? Background: The Department of Finance and Budget and Public Safety will present a review of their proposed fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three, six-year capital improvement plan to the Board of County Commissioners. Discussion: Finance and Budget reviewed Public Safe, Safeties FY two thousand and twenty-three through FY two thousand and twenty-eight, six-year CIP staff recommended budget requests totaling forty-four million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Public, Public Safety includes the Sheriff's Department, Detention Center, Career EMS, Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Medical Apparatus requests. Public Safety's requests also include the replacement of two firehouses, St. Leonard and Solomon's, as well as a request for the development of a Public Safety facility. Fiscal impact: The fiscal impact for Public Safety's six-year CIP proposed budget reflects forty-four million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. This amount includes two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand in state grant funding for the Detention Center projects in FY two thousand and twenty-eight. The funding is broken out below. Pay-go, eight million, seven hundred and seventy thousand; debt or bond, thirty-three million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand; grant other, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, with a total funding request of forty-four million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. This presentation is prepared the BOCC for the six-year capital improvement plan costs for Public Safety and seek the board's direction on those projects.
Thank you, Veronica. And just as a reminder to the board, we're not actually adopting the Public Safety CIP today. It's just to give you some information on where they're going, and if there's something up there you don't feel comfortable about, we can remove that, or at least give them direction we don't want to go in that direction. A lot of directions there, so.
Correct. This is what, right now, and before any changes that you, um, direct, is what the staff recommended budget would look like, which is our first public bu, published budget.
And, and Ms., Ms. Veronica, if I could, uh, this is part two of eight, correct? Different, um.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you're gonna see me a lot?
Yes.
One, two, three, four.
We don't mind.
Six.
Okay.
So this is the second of six.
And, and you arrived, a wise sage once said that we often neglect the ones we care about the most. So, when you came forward to the podium.
Oh.
I just wanted to.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I can always count on you, Commissioner Weems.
Thank you.
Me too. He's very compassionate.
He is, he is. He's always reassuring and calming. We can move to slide two, please. Good, perfect. Thank you. Uh, this is a review of the Public Safety's requested six-year capital improvement plan. We're going to review their six-year CIP breakdown of costs by division, FY twenty-three CIP breakdown of costs by division. We'll review each project, and we'll review the total FY twenty-three CIP expenses and revenues. For the six-year, Sheriff's Department, which is a vehicle, two hundred and thirty thousand; Detention Center, which is facility repairs and upgrades, seven million, one hundred and thirty thousand; Career EMS apparatus, five hundred and seventy-five thousand; Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Medical Apparatus, nine million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand; Fire, Rescue, and Public Safety, new facilities, twenty-seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's total forty-four million, nine hundred and sixty-seven.
Should we hold our questions to the end, or as we go?
You can do your questions.
Should do them as we go, cause it's gonna be.
Yes.
Sheriff's Department vehicle, two hundred and thirty thousand, is that for one vehicle or multiple vehicles?
That's for one vehicle. That's actually for a Bearcat that they're looking to purchase. It went into the budget in FY twenty-two, and we split it over three years. Due to the constraints in FY twenty-three, we pushed it out to twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, thank you.
So is that replacement based on age, or what, you know, I'm sorry, you're not the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, I'm not really sure. Um, I think it's a brand-new vehicle, an additional vehicle. I don't think it's a replacement.
Something they don't already have.
No, they got one.
Yes.
Yeah. Now they want two.
One or two.
I think so. I think this is an addition. We could get clarification on that, boys.
Somebody's raising their hand in the back.
Oh. Yay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deputy Director Al Jeffrey, Public Safety. Uh, working with the SOT team as close as I do, I do know this is a replacement project, not a new additional vehicle.
So do you know, Al, I don't want to put you on the spot, do you know if, the reason for the replacement?
Age and, uh, cost of, cost of ownership, basically. It's costing them more to maintain it than it's actually worth.
Do we know how much use it gets? Do you know?
I do not.
Okay.
I can't answer that question. And it's just from knowledge that, working so closely with them with the hazmat, that I've had discussions with them about it.
So the old one, I assume they'll just junk?
Probably, yeah. I, I, I don't know either.
I know, we're putting you on the spot, but thank you for your information. We appreciate it.
I'm sure there's lots of people who would love to have one of those.
I would say.
Commuting into DC. We good?
Yes, ma'am.
This slide breaks down FY twenty-three's Public Safety.
So, um, the, I'm not sure how the presentation's gonna go. Seven million dollars in repairs to the Detention Center?
Yes, over a six-year period. It's, a lot of this money is in FY twenty-eight for them, and that's for the, um, upgrade to their, their whole space. But, um, we have to keep it on the books, even though there's a lot of background on that.
But that's in twenty-eight?
Yes, FY twenty-eight. They're currently looking for, um, twenty-twenty-three. They are asking for.
One point six.
One, yeah, one point six million, and that's six hundred and thirty thousand for replacement of boilers. So it's HVAC replacement, and then. Pardon me?
Commissioner Hart's favorite topic.
Yes, I know. I looked at him, seeing if he was gonna respond.
I tell you, I so should have studied HVAC in school. If I had had a crystal ball.
It doesn't, I mean, my husband's in it from a, um, commercial standpoint. I mean, there's, it's a lot of dirty work. There's not that much money in it for you. I guess unless you own the company, then maybe you might have a higher profit.
Yeah, the design is where it's at.
Yeah, that's where, well, that's a design on anything.
Yeah.
Truthfully.
Yeah.
I mean, look at the schools. It's like two point four million or something on design. It's crazy.
So is that the original HVAC?
And boilers. Kevin, can you come up? Would you mind, please?
And you ever notice, like.
They're historic, aren't they?
Ours aren't as expensive.
They probably are.
As, you know what I mean?
Smaller units.
Good morning.
Cross with Detention Center.
Yes, sir.
What's the question?
Is this the original HVA system that we're replacing?
The HVAC system that we're replacing, the two hundred and seventy thousand, is existing from nineteen ninety-one.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Right. Right. So it's like the school system. They're forty years old. They don't last forever, so, you know.
And the new one's gonna be so much more efficient. You're gonna say money and electric and.
Oh, I want to see that in writing.
The building is so linear and, and stretched out that the reheats alone, the circulator fans alone, will make it more efficient from day one.
Right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, sir.
Don't go too far. So six thirty for HVAC. What's the other million dollars for?
The million dollars is for their generator replacement, like the other, um, equipment over there. It's, has some age on it, and it needs to be totally replaced, but it's not just physically the generator. The electrical's all gonna have to be replaced, transfer switch, all of that to go with it because of the age on the current one. I'm thinking some of the newer codes on electrical probably will have to be inputted into this.
And that was original, too? I'm getting a nod in the back. Okay.
Ninety-seven.
Wow.
Oh, it's not that old.
Yeah, I can't imagine that's something that, uh, you want to teeter with, uh, yeah. Power must be three sixty-five. Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to transfer.
Yeah, that's, it's essential in that building. The tower is three sixty-five.
We don't, we don't want all the doors unlocking.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
And they don't have a lot of windows, so it's not like they can depend on outside light, so they are literally in the dark.
I worry about them locks that, uh, she says.
Right. That's what I worry about, the locks. So, you can continue.
Okay, um, well, we'll go on and move through the projects now. So.
How about the EMS, or is that detail in where you're going now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, it's fine. I'm like way off. I think I was too heavy on my, oh, no, I've totally lost it.
Uh-oh.
There we go. Thank you. So, um, we'll go to Career EMS, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, Al Jeffries is here. He can talk about the, um, equipment that they're getting. I'm sure that's not a replacement. It's more to add to their fleet. Fire, Rescue, Emergency Medical, that's apparatus. Jim Richardson will go through those projects with us, or pieces of equipment. And then last but not least, Fire, Rescue, and the Public Safety's new facilities. They're in the later years of the CIP.
And Veronica, I'm sorry, but I just noticed, glancing through my sheet, the Bearcat is spread out over two years.
We approved a hundred and fifteen thousand in twenty-two, so we had it spread out over three years initially.
So why did we do that?
Um, cost factor, I don't think they needed it immediately, so they agreed to spread the cost out. I mean, it's, it's a small amount, so it's general fund money, so.
Which is unusual for a piece of equipment to spread that cost over two years.
I think they were being very generous with our CIP and willing to work with our total numbers and helping us out.
All right, I just saw that and it.
Commissioners, uh, Mark Wallace, County Administrator, one of the, I, one of the ways that we work with Veronica and the departments is, you know, we are capped at a certain amount of money per year, and even though a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars might seem like a small amount, to quote former Commissioner Kelly, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So Veronica takes a look at each and every item that fills those columns, and we adjust it so that we can pay for other CIP projects that we really, that are more important and need to be pushed to the front. So that's the reasoning that we spread out a little bit.
It just stuck out because of the piece of equipment I get. I mean, we don't spread out fire trucks that cost a million dollars.
No, no, sir, we don't. Again, this was something that they had asked for, and they were very generous in working with us under our constraints, so.
Okay, thank you.
Not everybody is, but they were, so they should get extra points.
Oh, gosh.
I won't.
You were good till you got there.
Sorry.
Don't worry, we'll pay for it later.
Probably. So, um, as we go through the projects, I was just gonna cover the first page unless you have some questions about Career EMS and their ALS transport ambulance with the equipment that we're, they're requesting in FY twenty-three for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Come on, Al. Explain yourself.
Again, Al Jeffrey, Deputy Director of Public Safety.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. The equipment.
It's for the, uh, to fit our strategy of adding additional ambulances, put them in as frontline units for Career EMS. It's the purchase of a ALS transport unit and all the equipment that goes on it. Fifteen lead monitor, uh, the CPR, uh, Lucas device, all the drugs, all the equipment thing, all the base equipment that, uh, goes on the ambulance, uh, transport unit so we can put it in service and provide the service to the citizens.
So five seventy-five, that's just one unit?
That's one unit.
One ALS unit.
One ALS transport unit, soup to nuts with everything. Um, now, when we come up and we place these vehicles, it'll be much cheaper because now we're just replacing the vehicle. We have all the equipment, and it'll move from vehicle to vehicle.
And where would this unit be located?
So right now, we have one unit at, uh, we already have units at Prince Frederick and Dunkirk, so it'll either be North Beach or Solomon's. So we'll, eventually we'll have two units at Solomon's, uh, and one at all the other departments in the, in the county. Or they'll go into the reserve fleet a, as needed.
So if you put this unit in Solomon's, it's gonna replace the BLS unit?
It'll replace either the ALS or the BLS unit. So they have an ALS unit and a BLS unit in Solomon's currently.
So the ALS unit that they currently have is age, aging, or?
So these, these are separate and apart from the volunteer apparatus. These are strictly career apparatus. We're either, um, and I think we've discussed it in the past about the level of re, uh, reserve units we need in the county. Uh, we've pretty much determined we need about twenty EMS units in the county to maintain frontline service and reserve units if a frontline unit goes out of service to maintain our level of capabilities and resources, uh, for our frontline units.
So how many frontline units do we have today?
So right now, there's two in every, Jim, help me out if I'm wrong. There's, uh, three, it's, there's two in every firehouse, one in Solomon's, one additional in Solomon's, so that's, uh.
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen frontline units, and, uh, total inventory right now is, uh, seventeen. And the intent would be to push that to about twenty is how many we really need total of in, not necessarily in service, but for reserve fleet, so that we can maintain, uh, fourteen to fifteen in service.
So you would replace current units and then place those units as reserves?
We'll work with the volunteers to see how they want our approaches, but it's getting the, we need the equipment in first to then develop that strategy, whether they want to use their, their equipment as frontline units, or if they want the career staff to use, uh, county-owned units as the first unit out, as the units that the career staff uses. Either way, but, uh, this is our strategy, to reach our strategy of twenty units.
Okay.
What's gonna be the, what's gonna be the lifespan on that, do you expect?
So lifespan's probably, depending on how much they run, obviously. Solomon's, uh, where's their ambulances at a lot faster than, say, somebody that doesn't run the number of runs they use. We can expect realistically somewhere from forty-eight years, depending on the mileage, depending on the, uh, dollar per mile cost of getting it, maintaining it, uh, things along that line. So I'd say forty-eight years. You know, we're, we're just, we don't have much, well, we have a lot of statistical information from the volunteer side, but they replace them on mileage and age.
Right.
Uh, we're gonna work ours off mileage, age, and dollar per, dollar per mile to cost, uh, cost effectiveness.
I'm just looking at this as not to try to be pessimistic, but if we're spending five seventy-five on it in FY twenty-three, figuring that it's gonna have a five or six year lifespan, we should see that same piece, that same number actually with inflation in FY twenty-eight, shouldn't we?
So you'll see a, a reduced amount to replace this unit. Let's use this unit as an example. To replace this unit, you won't have to replace the equipment on it. A unit right now, the last unit we bought was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars ballpark, just for the unit. The additional equipment, all the equipment that goes on it, the cot, the self-loading cot, all the equipment goes on it, brings it to that five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar price tag, lights, uh, all of it. Um, so when we replace this unit, you're only replacing the unit currently, right now, the unit alone costs about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars today. Uh, five, six years from now, add probably twenty, thirty percent to that.
Right.
Right, cause the equipment's gonna change, and they're gonna want the newest and the greatest.
Right.
When we get to twenty-eight, we know how the fire service works.
Right. So the equipment changes not that, not that frequently anymore. So the fifteen leads, or the big-ticket items of fifteen leads, a cot, things like that should last twice the length of the apparatus.
Yeah, just, just for the public's knowledge, tell them what a self-loading cot costs.
Forty thousand.
So did everybody hear that out there in TV land? A, the stretcher that comes out of that ambulance today costs forty thousand dollars. The stretcher that comes out of that ambulance today costs forty thousand dollars.
Hey, Commissioner Hans, you remember a time when we didn't have those?
Yeah, I'm old.
And. Explain what it takes to do it without that.
So, Jim, you know.
Jim, Jim Richardson, Division Chief for Fire Rescue EMS, it equals bad backs, injuries.
How many volunteers do you need and what's, I mean, the strength and?
I, I just.
Four.
At least four.
I'm not saying there's an alternative, I'm just saying, just to be aware of why this stuff is so expensive, the stretcher costs forty thousand dollars.
And we put a, uh, a six percent per year inflation rate for the ambulances for most of them, and they're re-looking at those funds right now as well.
Well, based on the projects we're bidding, right now, everything is almost doubling. So, that stretcher next year, if things continue where they are, it's gonna be eighty thousand dollars.
Pessimistic on that number, but, yeah. It, it's, and it's all driven by industry standards nowadays.
We digress, but when people see five seventy-five, they think.
Wonder why.
Yeah, you wonder why, and there's, there's part of the reason why.
Oh, and Pop Pop Thum and the Studebaker, those type days, I mean, that's a mini hospital traveling out there, and I tell folks, and it should be because time is everything, so.
That's why it costs so much.
But again.
We digressed a little.
I'm, I'm here, I work for you, so I'm here all day.
Oh, thank you.
And again, these, this equipment isn't the volunteers' equipment, this is ours. So, that replacement schedule would be a little different, I would, uh, hope. We hope, than, um, the volunteers. And we are building it. I mean, this is still relatively a new venture for us, so they're look, you know, trying to build that fleet, and they ask for one, about one vehicle a year, so unfortunately, they're just expensive. Okay, so now, now I'm gonna hand the presentation over to Jim Richardson, and he's gonna walk us through each of the volunteer fire departments and rescues, um, request for equipment.
Uh, Jim Richardson, Division Chief for Fire Rescue EMS, Department of Public Safety. For FY twenty-three, for, uh, the first unit would be Solomon's. Uh, we moved, uh, an ambulance in, ambulance thirty-nine, replacement three hundred ninety-five thousand. Then you have, uh, replacement of ambulance six-eight for Huntingtown at three hundred ninety-five thousand. Replacement of two medic units, medic one oh-one and medic one oh-four for Calvert Advanced Life Support. And that would conclude, uh, FY twenty-three for a total of one million eight thousand dollars. And, uh, the apparatus for the volunteer departments is not replaced just on mileage and age, it actually is brought in and reviewed by uh, a committee consisting of fleet maintenance and several other individuals to, to determine whether these are truly warranted for replacement. For example, Solomon's ambulance was brought in early because of, uh, wear and tear, you know, just the mileage on those units.
So, the medic units, the one oh-nine, that's vehicle and the equipment?
Um, that is a, a vehicle that is outfitted, doesn't include equipment, the majority of the equipment is re, re, uh, funded in other sources, the life pack monitors and et cetera. That would be, uh, uh, an SUV, uh, police-style package with cabinetry, lights, emergency equipment, uh, everything to maintain, uh, uh, temperature control of different medications and the drugs and everything that they carry.
And we piggybacking on somebody's contract to get those vehicles?
Uh, in most cases, uh, the, 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 uh, obviously, the departments are doing their own procurement, so they're required to do an RFP, or uh, in most cases, with these vehicles, they're using state contracts to buy the chassis and working with, uh, uh, ambulance vendors or other vendors to outfit the vehicles.
Thank you.
So, Jim just went through, um, FY twenty-three. Are there any questions about any of the projects that are in the five-year planning for the apparatus? I was gonna let him slide out of here this easily.
Tough one today. I do have a, I do have a quick question on some of the, on some of the equipment and apparatus costs and.
Yes, sir.
Vehicle costs in general. I mean, we're looking at average in way over a million a year in vehicles in this county. Just in probably EMS, if we were to just look at that. Even though there are different departments and agencies and everything like that, when there's a collision, or if and when, God forbid, there's collisions in reference to individual departments' equipment that we originally paid for, et cetera, on these CIPs, is it just the insurance company is, and it's their insurance company, our insurance company? Who pays deductibles on those? When there's collisions and stuff like that?
The departments are insured individually as, as private corporations. The county does fund that one hundred percent. Um, any deductibles, uh, could be taken out of their operating funds, which the county pays. Uh, coincidentally, uh, one of the ambulances that was slated for FY twenty-three was totaled in a motor vehicle accident, and, uh, it was, uh, obviously removed off the CIP. It was replaced with insurance cost. They have, uh, the policy is a replacement cost insurance or cost value. And, uh, I think there was one that was, uh, due maybe in twenty-three or twenty-two that was also replaced, so that comes off of the CIP. The vehicles are titled to the departments with the county commissioners having a lien on the vehicles until the service life, which is established, has been met. And in those cases, it was met.
So, they are titled, they're, they're titled with the individual corporations that are the departments?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, there's been two that have been totaled that would have been on our CIP for even more money?
Yes, sir.
That were covered under insurance?
Yes, sir.
But it, there's, in some of those cases, there's a gap. Insurance, is insurance total replacement?
It is, uh, they determine the value, they insure, they have an insured value, and if the department is, uh, is accurate, it should cover the en, the entire cost of it.
'Cause for our own personal automobiles, I mean, you can buy a plan that is one hundred percent replacement, but in most cases, it, the value of the vehicle is its depreciated value at the time of the accident, and so, you know, in that case, when you go to buy new, and there's a gap. But, but we haven't had any gaps?
With this insurance, say, for instance, the vehicle cost is, as Deputy Director Jeffrey said, four hundred and fifty thousand or four hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
They will, they will determine with the insurance company that the replacement cost, they do this annually each year, is four hundred thousand, so it'll be insured for four hundred. If the damage to the vehicle exceeds seventy-five percent of that four hundred thousand, then they will pay the four hundred thousand to replace the vehicle. If it's less than seventy-five percent, then it would be, uh, fixed, you know, returned to.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Veronica?
Thank you. Um, we have the buildings. Do you want to talk about the buildings?
Actually, Mr. Cosgrove, I think there's more about this than I do. That's not. I haven't been involved in that.
Jim wants to stay out of that.
That's real money.
That's a twenty-seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand for the six years, for the two fire departments.
And that's basically the two fire departments.
Currently, yes. Do you have some questions for JR?
So... Six hundred thousand in twenty-eight for public safety new facility. Director Vollen? I'll let you off the hook, JR.
Just for that.
I believe JR is probably the one to put that number in there, so.
Ah! You're tough today, Mark. I'm telling you what, I don't, I don't know what you put in the coffee this morning.
Uh, Jackie Vaughn, Director of Public Safety, that is to start the process of looking at the facility down on Skipjack as to what needs to be done there. Um, we're looking at moving our nine-one-one center there, as well as our EOC, taking them out of the courthouse, and knowing that those buildings down there are not gonna be con, totally conducive to moving everybody into those buildings. That's the beginning process. We actually, um, met with a company and started the process of, we told them what we were looking for. Um, they came up with a rough es, estimate, um, which kind of made us fall out of our chairs. But, uh, knowing that these facilities need to be hardened, and there's more requirements for those facilities, especially the nine-one-one center, it is gonna be a little costly if we have to build or add on to those, so we're just in those beginning processes to look at that.
And that's out in twenty-eight?
Yes. It will be retired by then. So, this will be JR's issue.
I'll be gone by then, so.
Um, but I believe JR, I mean, we've been working with them and looking at feasibility and space needs, um, as we move forward with this project.
So, six hundred thousand is just for a study?
I'll let JR answer that, 'cause you put the money there.
JR, Deputy Director of Public Works, so that, that six hundred thousand is, uh, pretty much just for starting the design phase of what would be needed, so it's just A and E money.
And I anticipate that there'd be some presentation to whoever's sitting in these chairs in twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Before that money was spent?
It, it's more of a placeholder in six-year, 'cause we're looking at, we all know we got the admin building moving forward, and the plan is to get anybody out of the courthouse that needs to get out in the next phase. Once the admin building is done, it's looking at getting nine-one-one center and emergency management out of the courthouse also to provide additional room, and that's the out year where we're looking at starting the, the design process.
Commissioners, the other side of that is, these projects get put in the CIP in the out years as a reminder that it's a future project, and you know, there are many times when we take that and push it out to even farther out into the, into the future, based on what the commissioner's desires are with any given project in the five-year, six-year plan.
Right, 'cause the CIP is just a forecast into the future when you get beyond the first year. Like, in this, for this one, you know, twenty-three is the most important section, category, but we do have to plan ahead, but.
Correct.
All these other numbers are in pencil.
Right, and we had to balance out our debt, so, you know, there's a lot of big projects in the next, well, in
Forever.
Three years, yeah. Truthfully, you're right, you're right, they just don't go away.
It's schools, firehouses, administration buildings, there's always something.
Mm-hmm. No, you're correct.
With government, we like to keep the economy rolling.
Yes. I think we're gonna do a good job of that.
Thank you, JR.
You're welcome.
So, do we have any other questions? Again, um, we look at the breakdown sheriff's department, detention center, career EMS, fire rescue, this, of course, is the six-year number, forty-four million, nine sixty-seven. This is just a expenditure and revenue summary of all, the entire CIP here, and, uh, just a snapshot at FY twenty-three for each of those departments. There you can see across the top, public safety is at three million, one hundred, two hundred thirteen? Three million, two thirteen. So, and then the breakdown for that is one million, thirty-six, four hundred and, am I at the right one?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay.
One point five.
One point five, and then, I look at my own paper. One point six for debt. And those are their funding sources.
So, I guess the question today, is there anything that we see in twenty-three that concerns you or have questions about? Like I said, the out years don't worry me, 'cause I can, it's all fluid.
They'll get readjusted again, they always do.
That's right. It's twenty-three that's important.
Yes.
We're not voting on this today, or?
No, we are not. No, we're not. This is just sort of a work session for you to get information.
Wow.
And if there was something in here for twenty-three especially that you said, "There's no way," then that would, this is the time, so staff's not wasting their energy and time to continue moving it forward through the process.
Right, 'cause we're constantly, you know, as things come in or change, which they do.
Right.
Um, we have to rebalance everything, particularly for FY twenty-three. Um, we're trying to keep our debt at a certain number, so we're at twenty-three million for general fund, 'cause, um, enterprise fund is self-supporting, so, um, their user fees pay back that money.
Right.
So, that's why we typically, um, focus on general fund, 'cause that is a hundred percent.
Commissioner Gadway is new, he's, he's, wow.
It's a lot.
It is a lot, but just to reemphasize, it's only twenty-three that we're really worried about, because.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, and it's sixty-three million from what I see.
Sixty-three million, four hundred forty-three, six hundred thirty-seven thousand. Um, we had nineteen million of that, nineteen point three of that is grants other, so that's money that we're getting from the state, federal.
But once we get through.
That lowers it a little.
And I got, I don't know if this is, if this answer's even there, but if that nineteen million that we're getting in grants, how much of that nineteen million is coming in with strings attached that we have to continue programs moving forward that we didn't have before that costs us additional money down the line? It's a little off-topic, but.
Yes, I don't, honestly, I can't think of one.
For this category, I don't think there is.
No, I can't think of one. These are pretty much one-time costs, a replacement of something, um, uh, support, like, uh, public recreation resources, sorry, Shannon, she's on the top of my head right now, but hers has the, um, what's it, like, one million or something for shoreline?
What, what Commissioner Gadway was talking about is more about programs and sometimes equipment.
Yes.
Uh, a, a, a division gets a piece of equipment through a grant, the grant just buys the equipment.
Correct.
Right.
We're stuck with maintenance, and then when that piece of equipment wears out, there may or may not be a grant to replace it, so then it's up to us to replace it.
Correct, and if we're building a park, then there will be costs associated with that, so yes, if you say yes to a park and we start building one, where you now have staff and equipment and maintenance.
But for this particular line items, I don't believe, I can't think of any situation where there were any continuing.
I would think, I guess the closest maybe might be Ward Farm, we get grant on that, and, I mean, we've been working on that, that's probably gonna be like a six-year project anyway. So, that will have strings, because now we'll have to get equipment.
Sometimes, a fire department may get a grant to help build the building, i.e. Benedict, that makes you do certain things within the building, but the grant should cover those costs.
Right.
But if that increases the size of that building, it may increase maintenance, heating, electric, all those kinds of things that are not calculated in the grant.
Unintended cost.
Yes.
What he said.
Yes, perfect.
But overall, most of these don't fall into that category.
Thank you.
But I could be wrong. But today is just, like I said, just a work session. When we get to the end, you know, we're gonna have to make decisions based on the cap for the CIP for twenty-three, and something's gonna have to go, based on what you see today. And the cap.
If we look to exceed where we're at.
Yes.
Everything's precariously placed right now.
Right.
So, we start moving, it's gonna move, it's gonna move all the six years, so. Um, our next present, you will see me again for public facilities on February first, you will be rid of me March first.
You can always come back.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay.
Any other questions, uh?
No, no, just for CIP.
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Have a good day. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Mr. County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Wallace County Administrator. Bring before you today, uh, subject is the recommendation for B O C C. Uh, citizen representatives to the Kerwin Local Implementation Board. Background, the Maryland General Assembly created the twenty-six-member Kerwin Commission in two thousand and sixteen to set a standard for education across the state of Maryland. The Kerwin Commission published the blueprint for Maryland's future blueprint, ultimately leading to the passage of the Kerwin Bill in early two thousand and twenty-one. As part of the Kerwin Bill, the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education are to jointly appoint an implementation coordinator responsible for the local implen, implementation of the Calvert County's compliance plan to meet the blueprint requirements. The first implementation plan report is due on or before June fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Discussion. During the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, the Board of County Commissioners voted to establish. the Board of County Commissioners voted to establish a Kerwin Local Implementation Board with the following membership composition: Two Board of County Commissioner-appointed citizen representatives, two Board of Education-appointed citizen representatives, two Calvert Education Association representatives, one Calvert Association of Education Support Staff, one local government liaison, and one Board of Education liaison. To date, the following representatives have been determined and/or appointed: Danielle DeValle Adams and Michael Schichler, Board of Education representatives, Jonah Stallings and Donna Ostenso, uh, CEA representatives, Stacy Taman, the KS is representative. I have been appointed as the local government liaison, and Kevin Michael of the Board of Education has been appointed as the Board of Education liaison. Two Board of County Commissioners citizen representative appointments are needed to fulfill the membership composition of the Kerwin Local Implementation Board. Conclu- there is, uh, no proposed, uh, this is proposed as a volunteer board. Concludes your recommendation, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners appoint Mr. Wilson Perrin and Ms. Melissa Goshorn as the B O C C, uh, citizen representatives. Your pleasure, gentlemen.
So move.
Second. I have a motion in a second that we appoint Wilson Perrin and Melissa Goshorn to the B O C C citizen representatives on the Blueprint Kerwin Local Implementation Board. It's a mouthful. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, JR.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, Commissioners. TS is advised, there's nobody on the call, but I know there's some folks in the audience who wish to provide public comment. Please walk up to the microphone while I read this. The county commissioners have adopted rules to maintain the order and decorum in keeping with the dignity of the government process. A copy of that is found here to my right. Lobbyists include those who seek to influence, uh, local policy and are compensated for doing so, or provide gifts to local officials. Speakers of public comment are strongly encouraged to review the Calvert County Ethics Ordinance and register in advance if required to do so. If you please go to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address, and whether you're speaking on behalf of yourself or as the designated representative of a group.
Well, I wrote it all down this time, so I'll get it right, I hope. But, uh, my name is Bob Estes, I'm a resident of Prince Frederick, and I'm speaking as a representative of the Friends of Hunting Creek. So, uh, and good morning, Commissioners and staff and folks in the ether. Uh... Today, I'd like to speak about the Senior Center Washout Repair Project and the grant application, which you all have already approved, uh, going forward with that. Uh, I've spent a great deal of time in the eroded areas, uh, which are to be repaired, and I've amassed quite a few pictures, but I want to take a hats off to, uh, the pictures that have already been provided you by, I believe, uh, Ms. Morland. So I was quite impressed by that, by the way, because it's not an easy place to walk around on. Uh, so, and I've seen, I've seen the downslope damage and the, to, uh, to the land and to the, uh, and to the creeks, and this sediment, we just think it's sand, but it actually is considered a pollutant, and it is important to control that sediment. Uh, and that creek is part of the Mill Creek watershed, which kind of stretches from roughly there all the way to Stokely-ish, and then crosses underneath, uh, Stokely, eventually joining, um, uh, Hunting Creek, uh, right by Greg Bowen's place. So, uh, so it's an important watershed, and one that, uh, is consistently under attack from various, uh, silting things that are happening. Uh, now, you all know that, uh, Hunting Creek, of course, has a, a highest biodiversity in all of the county, and has numerous, very important, uh, wetlands that help absorb some of the storm waters that we see, and critical to keep that, uh, healthy. So consequently, the Friends of Hunting Creek want you to know that we're strongly in favor of this Senior Center project, uh, which will improve the health of Hunting, the Hunting Creek watershed, and we would like to applaud our county officials, especially Department of Public Works, for taking on this complex endeavor, and for the other projects that they have completed and I, and that we know are in the pipeline. Uh, I know we don't have money for everything all at once, uh, and hopefully this grant will help us to pay for some of the, some of the other repairs that are coming up. Can always be hopeful. Uh, so, I've used tours of the Prince Frederick area, uh, to help educate a number of people, uh, some commissioners and others, uh, about, uh, storm water management issues, uh, and the result of, uh, poor management, what it has, uh, the results in terms of erosion of whether the, uh, because we have some very, very fragile soils. And I know, uh, Commissioner Hans, you probably saw the canyon out by Holly Hills. It goes from almost a no-slope to fifty feet down and fifty feet wide, almost immediately. Uh, so, one thing I do want to mention, though, that one time, the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan had an extension of West Dairs Beach Road right through that area that they're going to be repairing. I think it's pretty obvious to anyone that's seen the pictures or walked the land, that that's probably a bad idea, and that's one man's opinion, but I think the evidence is pretty clear. Uh, and anyway, uh, like I always like to do, if you have any doubts about what that area looks like, I'm always available for a tour. Put on your boots and just give me a call, and I'll be ready to, ready to take you anywhere you want to see. And by the way, I, I haven't lost one, one patron yet, so. They're always, they're always tilted towards the ability of the tourist.
You haven't lost any of them, so you know exactly where they're all at, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I put headstones on one, but, uh, you might not like that guy anyway.
Family might not know where they are.
Anyway, thank you, thank you. And by the way, I do want to thank you for the way you all conduct your meetings. I know this is all serious stuff that you all are doing, uh, but it is nice if we can laugh at ourselves once in a while also. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See no one else. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner McConkey?
Um, I don't have anything right now.
Commissioner Hart?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, went to the Farm Bureau Breakfast, um, Saturday, which was, was nice. It was very, very informal, so it was very, uh, easy to be able to, to talk to people one-on-one. Sometimes you go to functions and it's, uh, it's more scripted, and you don't have a chance to really hear what's on people's minds, so that, that was, uh, nice to have. And, um, you know, it's been a rough year. We've had a lot of people pass away already for such a short time in this year, and, um, a good friend of mine passed away, uh, Berkeley Robertson. Probably a lot of people don't know him up this way, but, um, it was a time in my life, I didn't laugh a lot. I know you find it hard to believe, as I'm always cracking jokes, but I did not. And, um, he was a person who walked in a room and instantly changed it. I know you've heard that sometimes from folks, and he was one of those. He truly lit up a room. He had traveled the world, he had a lot of, lot of stories from around the world, and could make me laugh, no matter what mood I was in. And he, he passed, and he'll sorely be missed by the people who know him and love him, and just my condolences out to his family and, and everyone who, who he touched.
Thank you. Commissioner Gadway?
Thank you, Mr. President. So far this winter, we were doing good on temperatures up until the New Year's, and it's gotten bitterly cold, and I just want to urge people as homeowners, please remember to turn off your outside hose bibs, reduce the possibility of freezing pipes, make sure that if you're going to be gone for an extended period of time, turn off your well, turn off your pipes, something like that, in order to possibly save you some significant water damage later on. Saturday morning, I also was at the Farm Bureau Breakfast, and I've learned that if you want to get government officials someplace to meet and discuss things, give them breakfast and they'll show up. So we had a good time. I had the opportunity to meet plenty of new people and bring up, uh, conversations with good friends that we've known quite a while. The, right now, we have six hundred and three subscribers on our YouTube channel. If you're watching and you're not subscribed, please hit the subscribe button and click, hit the bell notification, so you get, the bell icon, so you get notifications when new videos are uploaded. Thank you for the team that does so much hard work on getting that stuff together, and we get it published. And finally, on Saturday evening, I had the opportunity to go down to the Washington Capitals Arena downtown Washington, DC, and coincidentally, as so many of the sheriff's candidates have said, when you come back into the county, you feel safe? Yep, you're right. Anyway, we were up there for the southern, for the, not only to see the Washington Capitals play, but between first and second period, the Southern Maryland Sabres eight-U ice hockey team got to actually go out on Capitals' ice in front of twenty, thirty thousand fans, and those little guys, seven, eight, nine years old, were able to play a three-minute game from one end of the ice to the other. And they're not used to the, that, that huge long ice, and it was great watching them. And in a shameless plug, my grandson Braden got might of the night as goalie for stopping two goals.
Good job.
So...
Awesome. Good. It's awesome.
All good stuff. Thank you.
So you know why you feel safe when you come in Calver County? Because there's usually two deputies parked right there at the line, and if you're lucky, they'll pull you over and get to know you personally.
But every time I go to DC, that area, I remind myself how much I enjoy living in Calver County.
That's right.
So.
That's right. Commissioner Weems?
I just want to extend my condolences to the Burton, Streen, and Elliott families. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. So Commissioner Gadway and Commissioner Hart mentioned, Saturday morning, we did go to the Farm Bureau Legislative Breakfast. I want to thank them for hosting that event. And Commissioner Weems, I'm sorry, you didn't say you went, so I thought maybe you didn't want to...
Can I amend my Commissioner's report?
Uh, is this a point of order?
Is this a point of order that, you know? Forum.
Yeah.
It's the amendment to the amendment of the amendment. I remember those.
Give them an idea. Ideas always work. Commissioner Weems, you have the floor.
I just, I, I wanted to say, it was very informative, it was, it was a, a good event. Um, I committed an impropriety by asking County Administrator Mark Willis to speak. I volunteered his services. I want to publicly apologize to you, sir.
He's always prepared to talk. Stopping him sometimes is the problem.
I believe that was voluntold. I believe that was voluntold.
So, it was a good event, you know, uh, unfortunately, we didn't, only had one legislator there, but, um, still turned out to be a good event. One issue that did come up that day, a young farmer asked about, for many years now, the county land preservation program's been closed for new applicants, and, uh, just, as I told him and to the rest of the community, Planning and Zoning has been talking about ways that we could reopen the program, uh, maybe in a different format than was previously, but trying to figure out a way that we can reopen and prioritize some farms that are, want to get in and, and be able to capture them now while they're eligible. And, uh, as a plug, I would just a reminder, at our last meeting, we did extend the rural legacy areas, so, uh, check that map. Your, if your farm is in a rural legacy area, there's an opportunity there for preservation. And, um, the MOUTH program, this is going to sound like a preservation advertisement, but the, uh, Maryland Ag Land Preservation Program is currently open for applicants. If there's anybody in Calver County owns a farm and interested in preservation, there's another tool or an opportunity you can explore to see if that suits your needs. Um, so, and the only other thing I have is, uh, just want to remind everybody again that tonight is the public hearing for the Police Accountability Board at seven PM at the Harriet Brown Center on Dairs Beach Road, and what we envisioned to be the last public hearing. So this is your opportunity, and hopefully we can move forward. And I'm going to put a plug in for us. As I mentioned in our staff meeting this morning, I did see on, I believe it was Channel Four last week, they did a story about, um, citizens in Prince George's County and Montgomery County are complaining that the process was closed, and the only thing those counties have done to date is to put out, uh, requests for applicants to serve. Uh, they did not do any groundwork about makeup of the boards, and, uh, they put a plug in for Calver County because of the public hearings that we've held, the process that we've used, and transparency and inviting public participation was how it should be done. So, uh, shout out to, to us for getting it right. So, but, we are near the end of our process, and, um, if, if, uh, if, if our plan goes through as we anticipate, in the near future, we'll start asking for applicants of individuals that want to serve on the Police Accountability Board. So if you have an interest or desire, pay attention and, uh, that, that, that opportunity will soon be available to make an application. So I believe that's all I have. If I need a redo, it's going to be too late.
No, that was perfect.
Perfect. So, uh...
So you're only allowed one amended, um, a year, one amendment a year, I believe?
Nah, 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 there's no limit.
Oh, there's no limit?
No, no limit.
Okay.
Not for Commissioner Weems, anyway.
I think you should get one for every year that you've been a commissioner. So you would have, you would still have a lot left.
That's a lot. I'm already in the back, I'm already in the hole.
You're done.
A lot.
You're done.
Right.
So the Chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. President, I make a motion to enter exec session pursuant to General Provisions Article, Section three dash three oh five B seven to obtain legal advice, and Section three dash three oh five B eight to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Second.
Have a motion in a second that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone, have a great day.